All set? All right. I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. I'd like to do a roll call from left to right.
Bob Casari. Kurt Peterson.
Jack Stary.
Rose Aletta.
Joan Geissman.
Tonight, I'm gonna seat Kurt Peterson in Mike Lastrina's seat. She's not here tonight. Need a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved. Jack Stary.
Second, Joan Geissman.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Reading of the legal notice. First, I'd like to read a little brief summary of the, um, the meeting. Uh, this meeting is being recorded, so we ask that everyone speak slowly and clearly for the, for, so everyone can hear. The applicant will be given a chance to explain their application and reason for legal hardship. The ZBA members will be given a chance to ask questions of the applicant, and the chair will accept comments and questions from the public prior to closing the public hearing. Once the applicant has presented justification for the application and public comment has ended, the board may close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other information may be presented to the board from the applicant, the public, or the zoning enforcement officer. At that time, the board members may choose to discuss the issues raised by the applications. The ZBA is allowed sixty-five days from the close of the public hearing to make a decision. However, the ZBA may choose to vote on the application after the close of the public hearing and any board discussion. For an application for a variance to be approved, there must be four votes in favor of the application. Variance request denied by the ZBA may not be heard again for six months. Tonight, we're here for application two-two dash zero-one, five-four Riverside Street. Requesting, request for a variance to zoning regulations, table four-point-two-point-one, to allow for a forty-eight-foot-tall, twenty-four-hundred-square-foot building where thirty-five feet is required, is the required height. Application of BDS Engineering and Construction and property of Burdon N E LLC. Assessors map three, lot eight, zone R-ten. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. Jack Stary.
Second, Kurt Peterson.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, correction, it's, it's twenty-four thousand square-foot building.
And it's Riverview Street.
Oh, is it Riverview?
That's what it says on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fifty-four Riverview Street. What did I say?
Side.
Oh. Okay. With the application, the application was dated October sixth, twenty-twenty-two. With that, we received several photos. Eight photos in total. And those were stamped October sixth, twenty-twenty-two. A building diagram stamped October sixth, twenty-twenty-two. A flat map dated October sixth, twenty-twenty-two. Okay, at this time, I'll ask the applicant to step forward and just give an explanation of, of the purpose and then explain your hardship.
My name is Frank Borowski with PDS Engineering and Construction, and we're here tonight looking for a variance on the height restriction in that zone. And, uh, I'll let Dennis go into a little more, but the hardship has been, literally, they're in the right zone for their business, but the industry has changed over the years. The boats are bigger, heavier. The, thus, the, this building needs to be taller in order to service the boats and contracts that they have, as well as be able to lift them up with cranes inside of this building. Because now, the, the business has evolved into a twelve-month-a-year business. It's not a marina that would be basically shut down in the winter months anymore. It's a full-on, full-year-round business, and I think, I'll let Dennis explain it a little more.
Evening. Dennis Hancock, um, one of the lead directors here at Burdon in Portland. Frank is, is spot-on. The marina business has changed, and especially with the introduction of Burdon here. We bring, um, at full rate, we'll be retrofitting twelve boats a year for the United States Coast Guard, for the Atlantic Fleet. Over the next seven years, we'll actually retrofit close to sixty-four vessels. Those vessels, those weights, and the amount of, of material going in and out to the retrofit really depend on safe operations of the crane, which is one of the first things that drove us to looking at a new building that could support an overhead crane structure that drives this height. The other side of this is, over the last couple of years, you've seen the change of the vessels and boats that the marinas would be at Yankee or be at Portland was receiving. At one time, there were larger tuna boats, sixty-footers with high-capacity structures on top that would come in. If we look to bring those in and construction and upgrades with the forty-seven boats for the Coast Guard, we need a facility in order to house them. We're no longer just doing storage. We're doing these retrofits for the Coast Guard over the next seven years plus, and we look to expand to the commercial market. Just our impact alone in the last six months since we've come to Portland, we started with twelve employees between the two marinas. Currently, we're at about forty-six to fifty employees. Myself and, and my director of operations, we'll be hiring another forty people over the next thirty, over the next year. By December twenty-twenty-three, just the Coast Guard program should have, in essence, around seventy-five, eighty employees. With the growth and the support of this new facility, it also means the Coast Guard is gonna be moving more people to Portland. Um, as of right now, we have six Coast Guard uniformed personnel assigned to our facility here in Portland. Um, in the next two years, that most likely will grow to a number of fifteen to nineteen heads. So between the Coast Guard and Burdon, we look to have a hundred people just working and operating out of this facility safely retrofitting the forty, the sixty-four boats for the, the fleet and the Coast Guard. And again, that's dependent on that crane height, and that crane height is dependent on the forty, the forty-five, forty-eight foot ceiling. And, any questions I can answer for what we're doing and the approach?
What, what's your final compliment of people, of the employees?
Final compliment, um, by December twenty-twenty-three, easily upwards around seventy-five to eighty-five personnel. As we expand, we look to bring in more people in twenty-twenty-four as we move potential, um, R and D efforts. Um, you may have seen a brown army boat, a, a green army boat going up and down the river. Um, we've been actually doing some R and D testing on that army boat. So we do look to expand, but just for the contracts we have now, between us and the Coast Guard, it'll be between eighty and a hundred people at full complement.
The impact, the impact on, on the height, uh, related to specifically the area, um, I, I wonder if you can expand on, on that, because it seems like the property and, and your hardship, uh, relates to the property itself and how, how it works. Is it gonna impact, is it gonna impact, uh, the neighborhood? Because there is a residential in that area as well. It seems like, because I've been down there for, for boating stuff, there's, there's a, a great pizza place. As a matter of fact, he's probably the best pizza place. Uh, unfortunately, he can't run over the winter, but, uh, uh, I, I just wanna, uh, make sure that the impact on the area is not gonna, um, make a difference in that height.
I'll let Frank talk to more of that, but real quick, the neighbors to the right and left, upriver and downriver, will maintain their view and their vision of the River. And quite frankly, our neighbors behind us don't have the vision. And we, somewhere in the photos, we'll show you the back part of the property, where it's actually a very high, uh, tree line, and it's not even visible to those residents behind us.
I mean, I just wanna, I, 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 I'm looking for a, uh, a more of a, uh, an idea of being able to, um, say that the property and how it is based, based on the impact of the, the facility, which I think is an awesome idea. I think, I think that, that, that improves this town as, as a whole and, and, and allows us for, for more openings coming, coming up, coming up over the next ten years or so. That this particular variance, which you're adding, you're adding thirteen feet. Approximately. And, um, that is not gonna move into a situation where you're gonna have property, property owners not happy.
No, if, if you look at the photos, you can see the tree line. Like, the photo, you know, right there in front of me right now shows the view from the, from actually inside the, where the building would be to the, to the rear property line. And the tree, tree growth there easily, you know, covers up any view or any height. Then the height, like you said, you know, ahead, it's like thirteen feet taller than the existing buildings. It's not catastrophic. It's not, uh, a big impact. It's, it's a necessity for, in order to be able to house a crane in this building, which, again, goes back to safe work practices. Because of the, the, the weights, the boats, the tonnages, it's the only way they can safely perform these operations. We're going to Portland.
I, I under, I understand that point, and that's, and that's, that's, that's clear in my respect. I'm just, uh, where the building is gonna be, be, um, constructed, what's behind it doesn't look like there's anything that's gonna, it's gonna impact at all. And I wanna ma, make sure that everybody is clear in the fact that adding that thirteen feet is not really a, a, a deal that's, it, it's a deal breaker. And I, I certainly want Burdon to be here in, in this town, because I think it's a, it's a, uh, it's a, it's a great company to have here. But we do have zoning laws, and we just, we just wanna make sure that this variance is, is reasonable. And I think that's, that's the key thing, is, is it's a, it's a reasonable impact, as far as asking for a variance of that, for that height. I, I, I think it's, I, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with the whole project. I just wanna make sure that everybody's clear on how this is gonna work.
One of, one of our commitments when we first bought the two marinas and, and one of the owner's commitments, as a family company, we're committed to the community. One of the things that we made sure is, even though we're gonna be doing more retrofit, more business for the Coast Guard, we didn't wanna lose our connection with the community, whether it's how we operate the marina and give access to the public, or how we give access to the community. The other part of it is, is not to over-industrialize, not to grow our footprint, our size, our capability to a point where we're disruptive to the community. I drive those roads. I, I know the school routes. I know the school times, and we, we understand that. But it's one of the reasons we picked Portland, was to make sure that it was conducive to our family approach. We thought very intently about, would this be disruptive, whether it's through traffic or whether it's through just vision? And we all wanna be important for the, for the river and for the people. And we took that greatly into consideration.
Yeah, we actually put, you know, blocks of concrete out in the four corners of the property, you know, that walk the property could readily see where the building could go and, and be able to look and see that there's literally, there'll be no impact to the neighborhood from, from the added height.
Every time we get, every time we get an application, I try and go prior to this meeting and get myself familiar. And I went down to your area and it's four concrete blocks, like, three-foot by four-foot.
Yep.
Where the building's gonna be. And what I see is gonna be far enough back from the street so it should not impact that vision at all if people try to buy. And I, I think it's a good idea, myself. And, uh, I love the idea, but, of course, I love the town taxes, too.
It's always a good point.
I noticed, um, this is Joan Geissman, um, that on your plot map, you have marked out buildings that are going to be rehabbed at some point. And what's going to, I mean, are we gonna be seeing you all again saying, "Well, we want another building that's gonna be fourteen feet tall"? I mean, it, I mean, we're, we're in a situation where there are other marinas in town. And if we give you this, we're setting a precedent. And that's, I mean, I like the project, so I don't, but it's a consideration.
The buildings you see is that we're, we're modifying or we're flattening. Right now, it's really because of the age and condition of the buildings. They are in position on the marina that we wanna make sure that we have the ability to return capabilities to those marinas. That area would not be utilized for, um, retrofit or servicing of vessels. Eventually, that could be expanded space for people that are enjoying the marina, whether it's, it's a clubhouse or a picnic area or things like that. Down by the waters would, would not be our intent to move something like this, man.
I would think you're, I was thinking of the buildings that are, that are located behind your proposed building. You have two or three buildings there already.
The existing buildings, all the renovations are interior.
Okay.
You know, except for like a pad, my pad on the outside. There's nothing, no, no height changes there. This, this one would, would still stay there on their foreseeable future as far as needs for, you know, height and crane.
The building, the main building's getting, um, I'm sorry, I'm not a Navy person yet. Latrines and bathrooms, prior military, sorry. Um, it's getting latrines and bathrooms for both the marina and the Coast Guard by contract. The other building behind it is, will be the flat slab that we're looking at. Um, and then the large shed right behind this new building, which is currently used for, I guess, the term is cold storage. Because the way it was erected and made, we don't look to do any modifications to it. We'll continue to use that as a cold shed.
So I'm unclear on your hardship. A, a variance is given with some unique characteristics of the land, and you're not telling me anything about land. So what is, what is your hardship for a variance?
Well, the land is sloping. If you've been out to the site, you see it's sloping and it's on the segment. The, um, the height of the building is, will not be, it may be a lesser impact. Here, we're asking for that variance of thirteen feet. But it won't be that much of an impact from a visual line because of the actual grade of the building. But the hardship, unfortunately, is the industry has changed and just the necessity, it really, it's, they're in the right zone. They're where they're supposed to be. It's just that...
Why didn't you seek a, a zone change? An amendment to the... Right now, you're in an R-ten with a special permit, a marina. It sounds like you're really upscaling your business. So wouldn't you go to planning and zoning for industrial, and then you would have a fifty-foot height?
I don't know if I would say we're upscaling our business. I would say that we're adjusting our business to the current market stakes, and that's one of the largest challenges. As, as the marina was designed over the last thirty to forty years, it was designed for the capabilities at the time. Safe work practices, um, how we actually operate in, in, in the business now is what's really changed. And that hardship has created on us because without the height, I can't operate safely. And I can't, I just, I can't stay competitive with the market. I understand my neighbors to my left and right. They look more to do storage and small services. Um, we're looking to, to make sure that we can go back to a large service capability. And without that, we have the hardship of moving forward.
Um, do we have any comments from the public? Dan, do you wanna speak? Okay. Okay. Please state and spell your name.
Yes, um, hi, I'm Mike Nadolski, N-A-D-O-L-S-K-I. I'm a resident here in town. I live over in Blackberry Ridge Road. I'm also the chair of Portland Economic Development Commission. And the commission is obviously aware, welcomes Burdon to town, and has, uh, fully supported this application. And it's really just, um, quite simple, and some of the points have already been made. The business is perfect. It's, uh, it's a hand-in-glove for Portland's waterfront. The, in addition to the high-skill jobs, and they are high-skill jobs they bring, there's a great synergy with the commercial marina that's already there, and they'll benefit tremendously from the investments being made to support the government work. And I think the timing couldn't be better. The presence of Burdon, their investments, it ties in nicely with the development that's going on all around us in the Connecticut River, whether it's up in East Hartford at Goodwin, or it's Middletown and what they're looking to do. It places Portland in a position to be able to play a meaningful role in that redevelopment. And the second point I wanna make is, this is exactly the type of business that Portland or any town would wanna have. It's family-owned. I've also checked every place where they've operated here in the United States. They're very well-regarded. The government contract work that they do, it is, it is as stable as it comes, and it's particularly good work to have in town when you're in recessionary times. And I think, as a former veteran, importantly to me, there's a sense of civic pride that comes from knowing that we're playing a role in supporting the Coast Guard and helping them do their lifesaving mission. I think the last point I wanna make is, these guys have already demonstrated that they're serious about being a good corporate citizen. And that's important. You know, it's important because there's a lot of opportunity for development here in town, and so we welcome it. I mean, I think about it every time I come into this building. The storefront and commercial building to the left of us, to the right of us, they're both vacant. Across the street, more vacant storefronts. We need catalysts to help us solve that issue and bring a vibrancy back to downtown Portland. And projects like Burdon can help us achieve that. And they're already doing it. They're already doing it. I was out at the site last week, um, looking at their development and what they're doing, and I can tell you, I was impressed with what I saw, support of local businesses. The food in their break room for their employees, it came from Adams. The company that's catering their employee events, local restaurants here in Portland. The people making the signs that you have up on your facilities now, Portland, Portland Boat Signs making those. So I couldn't think of a, of a company that has actually come to town with this kind of potential positive economic benefit and has gone out of their way to do nothing but find and support the local businesses. So for these reasons, uh, the Economic Development Commission, myself personally, fully encourage and ask this, uh, ask this board to approve the application. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
What was your name again?
Oh, Mike Nadolski, N-A-D-O-L-S-K-I.
Okay, anybody else from the public would like to speak? Okay, then I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Jack Stary.
Second, Bob Casari.
Okay, all in favor to close the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No. Comments?
I think it's great. It's just, just a clear, clean and good debris there to the neighborhood. I mean, look, it, it, it has positive influence on the area, and I think it's gonna be a, a good neighbor for the town of Portland, I believe. And as I said, I went down there, walked the site, and, uh, I, I think it's great.
Well, they have not demonstrated what type of hardship there is with the land.
Sure they have.
And I think, I think they're at the wrong board. I think they need to be a planning and zoning or somewhere else. There's no evidence.
I think you're wrong. I think you're wrong. I think, I think, I think the, the property itself, because it, because it's, it's a height variance, it's not an actual si, side yard or front yard or whatever, they're, they're, they've proved that the site itself... And, and if you really think it, if there, if there's a, uh, if there's a, a grade that comes up from behind, it shows that it really, the impact is really not that, that, that bad, but it's, it's a, it's a, something about, about the, the property itself that, oh...
We're not prohibiting.
Plus, it, plus, it's, it's a safety issue. I think, I think we should, should, uh, approve the variance without any question. End of story.
We're not, we're not prohibiting them or inhibiting them from using the property as, as a marina. What they choose is to expand the building.
I'm not sure what your motive beha, behind considering, considering, uh, considering, uh, pushing, pushing it to a zoning, planning and zoning. They're asking for a height variance, which is, which is required. They're not, oh. It's, it's still, it's still a, a fair and reasonable request, so I think, uh, I think you're wrong in that request.
Joan, any comments?
I mean, I, I, I'm troubled with the, the hardship in a way, because it, it doesn't really fit the definition of hardship. And I, I tend to agree with Rose that it, we may be in the wrong committee, that it should be in planning and zoning, and that maybe it should be a text amendment. On the other hand, I think it's such a great project, and I don't see that it, um, would negatively impact the, um, neighborhood. So I'd be inclined to, to give them the variance.
Bob?
Uh, I don't have a problem with it. I think the hardship is the fact that, like they said, the boats are bigger. They have different contracts, and they don't have, they can't operate the way they wanna operate in the buildings that they have. They need the extra height to bring in these large boats and put them up on this...
I think they used, I think they, I think they used a, a great, um, idea that, and they can't do it without doing it safely, and that, and that, and safety is, is part, part of that variance as well. So I think that's, uh, that's really a, a push as far as, uh, as far as going and thinking that this is a, a reasonable request.
Well, it's thirteen feet.
But, but the im-
At the edge of the road.
But, but the, but the impact is not that bad.
It's sixty feet from the edge of the road.
Right, but they're asking for twelve-point-five to go up.
The, the area where the building is being built is in the lowest part of the property. It's not up on the top of the property, which would stick up even farther.
And there, there is where, there is where the hardship as far as the property goes, because you can't, you can't push it that hard.
But you can use, use property as is.
I think, I think you got, I think you have to still have to approve.
Any other comments?
And I, I think, as they say, there's larger units to bring in there. And they gotta have a crane of sufficient size to move merchandise by the inventory. And, uh, I don't think the variance is excessive. I think it's fine.
Should I read the definition of a hardship?
No, I don't need it. I know the definition.
I think we're overstepping our bounds. I think this needs to be in planning and zoning. I think this needs to be in planning and zoning. We deal with variances, hardships directly related to the land. And that's my feeling on it.
I'm of a different opinion.
I know. Okay. Any more comments? All right, then a motion to vote on the, on the application. Hold on. You can read it.
The motion is to approve Application 22-01, request for a variance to zoning regulation Table 4.2.1 to allow for a 48-foot-tall, 24,000-square-foot building, where 35 feet is the required height. Application of PDS Engineering and Construction and property of Burdon N E L L C, assessors map three, lot eight, zone R-10, and based on drawings, pictures, and other information submitted with the application, testimony provided, and the following hardships.
What is the hardship?
According to the applicant.
Can you give me the?
It's, I've got it here. The hardship is unique to this property is the evolution of the boating industry. The boats are larger and heavier. The need for a taller building is necessary for the business. The zone is correct for marine repair, yet the height is too restrictive. And refer to the attached photos in the plans, we request a 12.5-foot variance.
So a motion was made to accept the application. So we need a second?
Second. Kurt Peterson.
In favor, Bob?
I'm in favor.
Kurt?
Favor.
Jack?
Jack Starey, yes, 100%.
Joan?
Yes.
And Rose is opposed. Okay. Since the variance requires four votes in favor, you received your variance. Should get with planning and zoning for any other details that need to be completed. Okay, moving along. New Business is the calendar for next year for the meetings. I think everybody's got that.
Yep.
So I just, anybody who has any comments on it? I know there's one, October, November are pretty close, but usually it's a pretty slow period. So if everybody agrees with the calendar, just need a motion to accept the calendar.
And then the motion accepts calendar, Jack Starey.
Second, Bob Casari.
Okay, all in favor of the calendar?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's the calendar. Okay. So now we got Old Business, which is acceptance of the minutes. Hopefully, everyone was able to read through it. If everybody agrees, if you agree, then we just need a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved, Jack Starey.
Just need a second?
Second, Joan Geesman.
Joan, you were absent last meeting.
Right, I'm sorry. Sorry.
We need a second down there.
Joan, were you in the meeting? Bob, were you with me the last time?
I was, I was, I was second.
All right.
I even looked to see if I was.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are accepted. Okay, correspondence, I don't think there was anything this month. No newspapers? Do we have any public comment? No? Then we just need a motion to adjourn.
Jack Starey, so moved.
Second, Kurt Peterson.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned at 7:33.
Have we ever met in a proposal for adjournment?
I think we did.